If we could have a roll call.
Chairman Holden.
Present.
Mr. Oppel.
I am here.
Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Mrs. Yolesh.
Ake.
Dr. Ritter.
Here.
Mrs. Kutesch.
Here.
Mrs. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Diwello.
Present.
And Mrs. Kilman.
Here.
This time, if we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Tom, you've had something to say.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add, under item A1, third piece, add to the agenda a motion to approve Perry Hill School PTOs, a request to conduct fundraising.
Where is that?
A1.
Part A, A1, and there's two previous. This would be the third one under that. Second, I would like to add to the agenda a motion to elect Secretary of the Board. Put that under new business. Item number one. While we were there, I'd also like to add the National Federation High School Sports School Broadcast Program from the Athletics Department. That would be item number two under new business.
What is?
I'll repeat it again.
Yes, please.
The National Federation High School Sports School Broadcast Program.
You're to hand them again. That's enough.
Okay, then we all should have a handout.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So moved as amended?
Okay.
Added.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment first. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, now vote on the motion as amended. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's see. Okay, presentations and recognitions, our tenured teachers' report.
Mr. Chair, I'm very delighted that we are able to, as a school community, recognize the importance of tenure. We take tenure, we take tenure very seriously in our district, and we are very delighted that we have teachers that are able to go through their probation period and show us that they have the high-quality skills that make an education possible for our children. So tonight, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 10-151A, the following teachers, and I'm going to ask them to stand when I read their names and remain standing, please. The following teachers have achieved tenure status. Darcy Epstein, special ed teacher, Shelton Intermediate School, please stand. Alyssa Fernandez, visual arts teacher, Shelton Intermediate School. James Goddard, physics teacher, Shelton High School. Kelly Guerra, English Language Arts, Shelton Intermediate School. Lacey Herbert, elementary teacher, Long Hill School. Heather Holmes, visual arts teacher, Booth Hill and Sunnyside. Ashley Jarvey, mathematics, Shelton Intermediate School. Kayla Liggins, pre-kindergarten, Mohegan School. Roseanne Moon, special education teacher, Perry Hill School. Lindsay Nardoni, elementary teacher, Mohegan School. Amy Roden, special ed teacher, Elizabeth Shelton School. Kimberly Sterbach, elementary teacher, Mohegan School. Patrick Sullivan, elementary teacher, Mohegan School. Maria Trevetten, social studies teacher, Shelton High School. Sarah Troy, speech and language pathologist, Shelton Intermediate School. Carrie Yakowicz, library media specialist, Sunnyside School. Let's have a big extra round of applause for these fine teachers. We appreciate you.
Your families are here, they're proud of you, we're proud of you too. Thank you for your service.
Okay, next.
I have a couple if I may add. I'd like to ask, we have a very special visitor with us this evening, and please stay for a minute if you want to meet her. From Germany, a young woman who is an exchange student at Shelton High School, Rachel Schaefer, is a delightful young woman hoping to become a medical doctor at some time in the not-so-distant future. Would Rachel please step forward to the microphone? She's a little bit shy, but not too shy, and she makes great cake. Rachel, please, you're welcome. And you don't have to make a big speech, but we'd just like to say that we're so delighted that you're here studying with our students and that you, I know, are a great addition to Shelton High School.
Yeah, I'm very excited to be here. I'm very thankful for the opportunity that I will be attending Shelton High School for the school year till June. And I already made some friends. That's really nice. I really like my classes and my teachers. I like the whole experience so far. I have made some great memories. I went to New York twice. I went to Yale with my host family, and it's a dream of mine to go to Yale. So that was really dream come true. I'm very excited to be here, and I never thought that I would, like, one day be in America, and now I am. And it's, I'm very thankful. It's a great experience so far. Yeah.
Thank you very much. We're glad you're here. As a former foreign exchange student myself, I take it very seriously that students have this opportunity because it's such a great thing. And thank you, Mrs. Bush, for hosting her. We appreciate that.
Is she living with Shelton High?
She is living with, Mrs. Bush, would you stand for a second? She is living with one of our own staff members here in Shelton, Mrs. Bush, from Language Media Arts, Library Media Arts. Thank you. Mrs. Bush, from the Library Media Specialist at Elizabeth Shelton.
Oh, okay.
And finally, in the presentations and recognitions, I'd like to ask Mr. Drapp to, and I'd like to ask if our colleague Andrea Dioto would stand, please. And Ed Drapp, who is our finance director, is also a professor at Sacred Heart University. Maybe you could come right up to the table. That'd be great.
This award is long overdue.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
As the now past president of the Sacred Heart Alumni Association, I would like to award Andrea the Administrator of the Year Award from that organization. So congratulations. Long overdue.
Yeah. Next item on our agenda is public hearing, and we do allow up to five minutes for each speaker according to our Board Policy Number 9325. As a reminder, no Board of Education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within public comments. Does anybody wish to address the board?
Yes.
Okay. You can come forward and please give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Anne Kazereski, and I live at 36 Anna Street here in Shelton.
If you would sit and speak into the microphone, then we can hear you better.
Do you need me to repeat that?
Please, thank you.
My fair microphone's good. My name is Anne Kazereski, and I live at 36 Anna Street here in Shelton, Connecticut. And the reason I'm here this evening is to just share some information with all of you, the Board of Education. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and all of my coworkers here from local 217. I've been working personally as cafeteria worker for 13 years in the system. I came to the system when my son was young. It was just a little fill-in job. I grew to love my job. I've always had a niche for food service. This job afforded me, and has afforded me, the opportunity to contribute to my house, you know, my household, and to my family in so many ways. So as the board, you've chosen a new company to step up and provide the food service for our children here in Shelton. And first of all, I was very excited that we were, we had your support, and you were there to, you know, to ask them to give us all a chance to apply for a position. So we're all, I speak for all of them. We're all grateful for that. And it was our understanding that we were going to be provided, you know, substantially similar wages and benefits. And so now that we're in negotiations, my coworkers and I are facing a 10% to 12% pay cut. We're losing affordable health insurance, which there are, you know, a handful of women, about a dozen, I believe, that provide the insurance, healthcare insurance, for their families. And there are five families that are in jeopardy of losing their healthcare altogether. And, you know, women prior to us fought long and hard battles for us to have these wages and benefits. So personally, I'll be losing 12% of my income. It's unacceptable. You know, it's not inexpensive to live. We all know that. We're all looking just to keep a good standard of living for our families and ourselves. So as food service workers, we make a moderate income. Okay, so we really can't afford to lose that pay cut. And we're asking, and we really need for you guys, you've been supportive to us before, you hired Whitsons, we need you to ask them to be accountable, to protect the families of Shelton. Basically, for all of us here, we're parents, we're grandparents, there's aunts, sisters, brothers in, you know, my group of coworkers. We have, people have grown up here, we've lived here for many years, we're raising our families here, our grandchildren are growing up here, and this is creating a crisis for us. I mean, it's, I'm sitting here tonight, this is something I never thought I'd have to do. And I, you know, I know things are different, but, you know, this is where we're coming from. The world is changing, but this is very important. And as a group of cafeteria workers, we need to ratify a contract that is going to help us sustain our families. And we're asking for your support to do that. You know, we would love nothing more than to go to negotiations and have this done in the next couple of meetings. But it's not really looking like that. So just thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Tempco. I live at 146 Myrtle Street. As an alum from Shelton, I graduated in 1983, and with parents and siblings who have been lifelong residents here, I am appalled at this board for not upholding Winston Culinary to keep the wages and benefits, that these hard-working women and their families, many of whom are residents here in Shelton, and their kids go to school here in Shelton. I see a sign up here that says unity. I wonder what that sign says, and I hope that you will stand united with these cafeteria workers. I also just want to say, I hope the board here does not decide, this is the quote of the month, "to take a knee on this issue" because it is a serious issue, and it will affect many, many families. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else like to address the board? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jessica Shimana. I live at 27 Molnar Drive. These are for three other mothers also. Our children go to Mohegan School. And we just wanted to address the board tonight about an issue that we've all spoken to Dr. Clouette about, but also wanted to bring it to your attention in case you weren't aware. Because of the unfortunate cuts with the city budget, with the eight teachers that were cut from the school budget, our second grade class at Mohegan, school number, or class numbers are very, very high. There's 25 and 26 students in each section. These are coming from kids that were used to classes of 16 to 18 last year. At back-to-school night, all of us were, I mean, we knew the numbers going in, but I think being there in the classroom and experiencing it was a totally different experience. And our teachers are unbelievable. I mean, they're wonderful women, but they are not magicians. There's just only so much one person can do with that many kids at six and seven years old. So what we're asking for the board is we understand that there's a financial crisis, and we understand that the state hasn't come back with our budget yet, and we understand that there's an issue. We're looking for you to get creative somewhere because 10 months like this is just unexcusable. It can't happen. These kids are going to suffer, and they're the ones that are going to be, you know, reaping the benefits, or not reaping the benefits, I'm sorry, of whatever you guys decide here. Paige came home from the bus the other day, and this is not to say anything bad about her teacher, but it's just the environment that she's in. So this has nothing to do with her teacher, but I asked her how her day was, and she was explaining that they were learning something new, and she said, "I didn't quite understand what was going on." And I said, "Well, honey, why didn't you just raise your hand and ask your teacher?" And she said, "Mommy, she's just too busy. She can't answer all of our questions." And that's not okay. That's just not okay. And I am not blaming the teacher at all. I'm not, you know, being disrespectful in any way. But she's one person, and at least we need to have helpers in those classrooms. There's not one para in either of those classrooms, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong. That's ridiculous. So please, please, we're asking you guys to take a look at this and make a change sooner rather than later.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Yes?
Hi, my name is David Kiley. I live at 27 Barber Drive. I'm a graduate from Shelton High School. I graduated in 2012, and I've lived in Shelton my whole life. So as a young person in Shelton, we care very deeply about how well-paid workers are in the schools that we graduated from, and we also care very deeply of keeping good-paying union jobs that can provide a livable wage and a dignified job position for people in the town. So I think the people who live in Shelton and work in Shelton should be able to afford a dignified lifestyle within the town. And for people in my generation, many of whom have difficulty finding work, some of the only few options left are the union-paid jobs that can offer this kind of, you know, dignified lifestyle. So with Stone, the company is trying to destroy that. So I hope you consider that. That's it.
Okay. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none. Dr. Clouette, if you could please respond to these two issues.
Certainly. Regarding the contract that the union that's represented here tonight has with Whitsons Food Services, they are the employers of the women that are here tonight. We like these women. We know that they've done a good job for us and for our children, and we also know that we are not able to speak to the issues that they're raising tonight because we are not party to the negotiations. They're not negotiating with us. They're negotiating with the company. And that's something that they're well aware of, and I think there are ways that they can advocate for healthcare, better healthcare for themselves and perhaps for all Americans. But while we respect their right to be here tonight, there's no question they have the right, I'm not sure that this is the venue that can help influence negotiations. We are not legally able to participate in the negotiations. We are not party to the negotiations. But interestingly, some of what was said tonight links to what the other group spoke to tonight. Our former food service provider ended up operating in such a way that we ended up, we, the board, had to subsidize to the tune of a lot of money. I won't give a precise number, a lot of money. And we also have to take that into consideration. So for instance, the idea of hiring a new teacher, for instance, that's directly related to us not having enough money because we're paying it to other organizations, outside organizations. So we have to balance everything, and I'm going to say something I hope that's very clear to everyone. We consider and are supportive of what you ladies have talked about, but we are also focused on one thing primarily, and that is the education of children.
All righty. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, approval of the amendments. We have in our package the minutes for the special meeting and regular meeting of August 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Okay, motion carries with one abstention. Okay, communications to the board. We've got various things from schools thanking us for the flower arrangements that are given to each school the first day of school. And, let's see. Okay. Superintendent's reports and action items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no action items under my report, but I will say that the Strategic Planning Group is continuing to do its work, and we have our first meeting of the core group next week on October the 4th at 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and we will be meeting here and talking about our plans for this year, specifically our focus on certain non-tested milestone assessments. And we're going to be talking about that throughout the year, and you'll get updates and reports at every board meeting throughout the year. Teacher evaluation data report was provided to all of the board members. These are not, just for clarity, these are not reports that include the names or evaluations of individual teachers, but just looking at the patterns of evaluation. And I believe that I have been able to offer some explanation in the board packet about what that information is, and we've shared it with you, and we can certainly discuss it tonight if you would like, and/or discuss it tonight and into the future.
Yes, I do too.
Yeah, please.
Just looking at the data for the elementary schools, you know, in my former life, I did a bunch of assessing, analytical data, and I see, one really sticks out as skewed, and the other ones are as well. And I was just kind of wondering, like, why is this? When I look at 30 proficient and two, only two exemplary, when all the other schools are 30% and 40%, and that's more normal, I think, in our field. And so I'm looking for reasons why, and I know we have new administrators, and so I would really like you to examine, keep your eye on that.
Okay.
And compare and contrast with this report and see what we can do to make that a better number that's going to fit in with all of the other ones. I know that at that school there are exemplary teachers that are among the two listed. There are no names on any of these. It's just a number. But it's just sticking out there, and it
It kind of stood out.
Red lights are flashing to me. It's like, no, this is, can't be right. There's something going on. So I would like to ask you to do that.
We can do that.
And I have a question, Chris.
Yes.
At the high school, six teachers were not evaluated out of the 100 and, whatever, 120?
120.
Okay. Is there a reason why those six were missed?
I will get the answer to that question. I believe, well, I don't want to offer a likely scenario. Let me find out the exact facts and get back to you with the facts.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Certainly.
As you know, we had two teachers that passed away during the course of the year, so we had long-term subs in those positions, and we had four additional teachers who went out during the course of the year for family and medical needs. So they were all due to four teachers for illness, and unfortunately, two of our teachers passed away.
Okay.
So they did not finish the school year.
That's excellent. And Chris, you mentioned that the teachers that were underperforming and chose to leave the district are not reflected in the report. And I think that that kind of information is valuable to have in that, you know, because I know you tell us, and I believe that, you know, the ones that are underperforming, a developmental plan is put together to bring them up to satisfactory performance. I think it would be good for us to know that, and again, I don't care about names.
Right.
Because people leave for a variety of reasons.
Yes.
But that we would have that data as well, which reflects to me, or tells me, that the principal, the headmaster, whatever, who's doing the evaluation is, you know, we, because this way it looks skewed. Everything is, you know, it's not a bell curve. It's, everything is skewed to the right, and there's no data on, you know, for the left. And yet there is because those people have selected not to continue in our employment.
We can certainly look at how we present the data and have a more subtle description. I would add, though, that I would just like to, you know, respond to that a little bit, that it's true that the quality of our teachers is not necessarily reflected in a bell curve because it's true that more of them are very good and would skew to the right than would be in a typical, you know, but that's my experience interacting with the teachers and working with the administrators.
If I could make a comment, just from my own experience with the new evaluation model. I'm the same teacher every year, but sometimes it just depends upon the kids you get and where their testing scores fall and whatever the numerical values are and how things are weighted as far as district testing and assessments and things like that. And one year I could be proficient, and another year I could be exemplary, just because of where the numbers fall.
Please be assured, board members, that we take the issue of evaluation of all of our staff very seriously, and we're happy to share information. Crowdfunding. So crowdfunding is not an action item for tonight, so there's no vote required or pressure to vote, but we did discuss it at some length at our policy committee meeting. There are teachers and members of the community, parents associated with the school district, that are interested in doing some fundraising through various crowdfunding mechanisms. GoFundMe is a well-known one, and we are exploring that. We have not made a final determination. The policy committee will discuss it in more detail, but it is my belief that as we have those discussions, we should look at any form of crowdfunding. It should fit into our framework for how the board gets to consider the details and then approve or not what kinds, what sorts of revenue coming through the district. So we're going to continue that discussion at our next policy committee meeting, and I believe we will come to the next board meeting with a recommendation. And last but not least, Vicky White is going to do a presentation, a brief presentation about our ongoing Project EL. The EL stands for English Learners. And those of us who are sitting right here might want to move a little bit because she's going to protect it onto the wall. In any event, this is a multi-year program that primarily helps and works with teachers who learn different and, different and new approaches to how to work with English learners. The thing that I like most about this program is that it relies heavily on research and also the expertise of a number of our teachers who have become exemplary leaders, not just in our district, but in the region on this issue. We had a very successful conference in Shelton this summer that was very well-attended by teachers. We have more of that coming, and we have additional funding for the hiring of teachers to support. Now, it's very narrow, so we can't hire them for any purpose. We have to hire them for this purpose, but it's money that does not come out of our general fund.
Well, thank you. For those of you that may not know me or are new to the board, welcome. Nice to see you. My name is Victoria White, and I work out of the My name is Victoria White, and I work out of the Office of Teaching and Learning as a supervisor of literacy for the district. And Chris has asked me to speak to the board tonight to provide an update on our project itself. Project Excel is a grant that we received, and it is a five-year grant, a federal grant, in which it's approximately a little over $2.5 million we're receiving to develop teachers' knowledge in the area of their L learners. This is the philosophy of Project Excel. It's really for us to increase our knowledge base and our teacher strategies around our L students, so that we could really focus on personalized learning and creating tiered systems for groupings of students, so that we're really honing in on what they need to improve their achievement and close some of their achievement gaps in order for them to acquire the language a little bit more quickly. And it focuses on the whole child. These are some of our partners in Project Excel. We, the district worked with UCLA in writing the grant, in which we got approval for. The Center for Secondary School Redesign is one of our partners in the grant, working on some professional development for us. One of the main focuses this year is that we are moving into student-led conferences, not just through the Project Excel grant, but we're also working with the School of Innovation. And other schools are open to the opportunity of training when it comes to student-led conferences, so we're not just focusing on the schools that are working in the grant, because eventually, this is something that we would like to turn key to the district. Boys and Girls Club and Plum Memorial Library are two of our community partners. They have been such excitable forces in this grant, improving their own program at each of their individual locations, as well as collaborating with the district in hosting various nights for L students and their parents, scramble nights, there's different read-alouds that are happening throughout the year at Plum Memorial Library, as well as the Boys and Girls Club is offering tutoring to students and entrance into their after-school activities. These are the current participating schools. Elizabeth Shelton and Long Hill were onboard last year as our first schools, and this year, Sunnyside and Perry Hill have joined. At each of those schools, we have a site facilitator, which is one of our T-Sol teachers, and the school puts together a team, people volunteer to be a part of the team, in which they are having approximately one, one team meeting every three weeks or so that is led by the site facilitator, and UCLA also attends those meetings, as well as our partners at CSSR when appropriate for training and professional learning. Any monies that are paid out of the grant, I'm sorry, paid to the teachers that have volunteered to be a part of the grant, are, come directly out of the grant, so there's no city money that is utilized in order for us to implement this program.
Vicky?
Yes?
Do you write the checks for that? Do you hold the total amount, or does it go to Ed?
The, specifically, the time sheets come through my office.
Okay.
After they, the site facilitators manage the attendance, and then my office submits to accounts payable for processing. So, Ed is aware, he, as, when Ed came onboard, he was provided information about the grant, he's met with UCLA, and has been working with Kathy Arugio to be brought up to speed.
Why isn't Mohegan up there?
There's no particular reason why any school isn't. I've worked with some of these schools and asking them to come onboard and be part of the collaboration. The goal is, through the five years, is to have all of our schools onboard.
It's an incremental approach, two schools, two schools, we're going to expand it out.
In terms of specifically, Mohegan, Dave, I can tell you, my perspective, they're not one of our higher L populations, so that wasn't the first school to come onboard.
Vicky, what was the amount of the grant, the size of the grant?
Two and a half million.
Could we specify a little bit about, just imagine a pie chart, because it would be, I wish we were, I wish $2.5 million was coming directly to us and to our accounts.
It's not.
That would be preferable, but that's not the case.
If we go back to the current slide, you see four different partners, including us in the grant. So, the amount covers all of these people, as well as an outside organization for evaluation purposes. So, there's a lot of people that are getting monies to participate in the grant. So, you know, to Chris's point, please don't think that the grant is solely coming to Shelton for us to disperse those monies.
The outside group that is evaluating you, they have a matrix that they are using to determine whether or not our program is effective?
Correct. And that matrix is developed through the writing of the grant with UCLA, as well as following federal guidelines.
And who gets that report?
The federal government. We get the report, but the evaluation team, in conjunction with UCLA, have to report back to the federal government to make sure that we're meeting the requirements for what we said we would execute in order for us to continue receiving funding. I've been involved in other federal grants in my previous district, and the evaluation piece is important, because at any time, if you're not meeting requirements, you're doing what you have set out to do through your planning, the federal government can reduce funding or pull funding.
And we're in our second year of this?
That is correct.
So, the first-year evaluation has been completed?
I don't believe it's on a yearly basis. I know there were some pieces that had to get done, but I don't believe there was a complete evaluation. The monies were released a little late with the federal government. Typically, in year ones with the federal government, it's a slow start, so, you know, money wasn't, wasn't released September 1, and we didn't go into implementation September 1. It took about a January start.
So, first year has not been evaluated, or it's in the process of being evaluated?
Process of.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, this is our summer institute that we held in August for two days, and you'll see this picture up here, is a picture of the room. All four schools, and in addition to Shelton Intermediate School, had a representative that through their conference in New Hampshire became interested in Project Excel and wanted to join us, and we said, sure, come onboard. So, a teacher from SIS joined us as well, and, you know, this is a work session happening with a lot of our partners involved in the grant, some presentations you see, and some group work that was created. A lot of positive energy those two days, and it was very well-attended by all four schools. Each team has approximately 10 people on their team. One of the aspects of the grant is for us to work on family, family engagement in the district, and one of the aspects we are creating is what we're calling a parent university. And we're offering three to four, what we're calling courses throughout the year, in which parents can come to the course, it's an hour and a half, and learn on various topics. The first one, we're looking to hold early November, and it's called What You Need to Know, is the name of the course, and we are familiarizing parents with, our L parents, with ways in which they could communicate with the schools. You know, depending on what countries people come from, or what their background and experience is, you know, a task that we might see, you know, we might deem very simple as calling the school when your child is sick, may not come naturally to somebody. So, we are going to familiarize parents with how our school systems work, what our schools have to offer in terms of resources and personnel. That's another aspect that can be very different for some of our families, as well as getting them acclimated to Infinite Campus and the Parent Portal, so that they have another way of communicating with their teachers and schools. This particular logo was created by one of our students at Shelton High School, Su Ming Li. She is the winner of the contest and will be honored at the first parent university course. So, this was something that was done with Ria Zampano and her students at Shelton High This is a short video about some of the work we're doing. Your original one called "Hank," you're using transitions, you have "and I," "and I," "and I play games," "and I play Legos." We have some really great things that he does, but we can try to use something other than "and I." And how did you come up with some of your sentence starters for the day Hank found dinosaur bones? How did you do some great sentence starters? You have "I will find dinosaur bones," and dinosaur was extinct. Great vocabulary, too. You read your next page.
I will find the bones, and I will finish, it was a penis.
You know what I missed on that page? You don't have any "and I," do you? I wonder if you have some strong sentence starters. So, something that I thought we could work out now is coming up with varied ways to start your sentences. Begin taking out some of the "I" and explain the actions. He started with drawing a picture of his character in the rainforest. He said, "I am in the rainforest." I mean, he was telling about what would happen along the way, and adding a little more details and still building up those transitions.
I think what was really important about both of Lori and Kristen's lessons was that they provided like a preview for then, now, tomorrow, and the next day's work within the classroom. So, it was something that, it centered on particular skills that they needed fine-tuning, but it also served as a precursor to what they'll be doing with their own class or in another lesson, so that they also would feel the confidence to possibly even volunteer or just jump right into the assignment once it's in the classroom.
...to be perfected, because if she can't spell it correctly, she doesn't want people to see what she's writing. So, we're doing try and raise for her, she was even right, she wants that to be in writing and writing it up.
I think that our students, everybody, you have to be aware of those three areas. First of all, vocabulary, do you have enough to deliver what you want? Number two, verbals, the verbs, are they using correctly? Because you know, when you're starting to the pass of predering, you're going to forget the endings, and then the same end that you mentioned, to allow, help them make the connections. Good, thank you.
So, that was an example of our ESS team. You saw a little bit of work a teacher was doing with a student. The group setting that you saw was one of the team meetings that takes place, and the gentleman at the end was Dr. Juan Lopez with UCLA as one of our partners, and he helps to facilitate some of the professional learning the teachers are receiving. Any additional questions? In your packet, you have a little bit of the additional information as well as the checklist. Not lights on? Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky, nicely done. It's a great program. Shelton is very fortunate to have the kind of leadership, including Vicky White and some of the teachers you saw today who are helping to make it happen. We're quickly becoming recognized as a leader in the region in this area and getting ready to establish a leadership academy.
Yes.
For teachers in the region who will, in many cases, tuition in to come and learn how to better serve EL students. And by the way, the kinds of instructional techniques and design you see in relationship to how to best serve and support EL students, or L students, sometimes people call them, are also good for all kids. The kind of strategies are good for all kids, because ultimately, and I say this, I know I'm redundant with this, but we're all English learners, and all of our students are English learners, and these strategies help all kids. And then I have one more thing, Mr. Chair, and that is, this morning, I visited some of the athletic facilities over at Shelton High School with Mayor Loretty and members of his team, including Gene Sullivan and Gary DiFilippo, as well as members of our team, including Ed Drapp, John Niski, and John Calhoun. We walked and looked at the track and the bleachers and other areas of the athletic facilities. We talked about tennis courts, we talked about the facilities associated with the bathrooms, et cetera, and we are developing a plan, and we'll be going out to, the mayor's office will be going out to ask for an RFQ, a request for qualifications, so that we can get a design professional in that can work with us on taking the vision and putting, and quantifying it and making it into an actual work that will be completed. We're looking at trying to have some of the major work done, so that next fall, the field will be completed. That's the anticipated timeline.
That made a referendum or something?
Well, some money has already been, it could mean that, and some money has already been appropriated by the Board of Alderman to get this started, so the money is in place for the first phase of planning and design. That money's there already. And then it depends on a lot of things. The level of fill, how much fill, what would have to be removed, the level of the new field, the so-called blanket, what that would look like, what will the ADA requirements be regarding the bleachers? There are a number of factors, and they have to be quantified, so that we can then see that, the answer to that question.
Yeah.
Have an ability to predict what have we lost.
Right, right. Huge tragedy.
Yeah, and complicating matters, we also have the fact that there don't seem to be any people around who are sure of what's underneath the existing field. There is legends that there are tree stumps under there. Maybe it's true, maybe Jimmy Hoffa's under there, I don't know. We'll find out on the sort of votes. The plan is to come up with something that will be a good long-term solution. Next item is, we do have information about the SIS Nature's Classroom Peel Trip that has been approved, and that's just for our information. Board action items to be presented for a vote. Consideration of Board to approve the following request to conduct fundraising activities during the 2017-18 academic year. We have the Elizabeth Shelton PTO, the Shelton High School Girls Cross Country, and the Perry Hill School PTO.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's see. Consideration of Board to approve the request of the Shelton Intermediate School Band Jazz Band and Jazz Choir to fundraise using a GoFundMe campaign to purchase sheet music.
So, move for purposes of discussion.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in seconded for purposes of discussion.
Mr. Superintendent, you have approved this then by placing it on the agenda?
I am supportive of the notion, but I think, I think at this point, it would be my recommendation to the board to consider tabling this until the policy committee has an opportunity to review more detailed language about how we want to potentially handle crowdfunding.
Point of information, are we, this is to purchase sheet music that is part of their curriculum?
The sheet music is used for a variety, it is part of the curriculum, it's part of performances, it's part of the cuts that we went through last year to come up with a budget, so different things around the district were cut and reduced. They like to have, they have lots of sheet music already. Naturally, they are working with young people, and they like to keep up to date, and that's appropriate, and so they like to buy more sheet music, so that they're up to date, and I support that, and I think that's a good idea.
And we can't find $1,500 in our budget of $62 million to buy this, and they have to go out and get donations? I find that offensive.
Well, I would, I would say this to that. I would say, the amount of requests that I get every day from parent groups, from teachers, all reasonable people, add up to a lot more than 1,500. Each 1,500 adds up to 150, adds up to 250, and each individual request is reasonable. And we're not even at the point of talking about mulch for playgrounds and cleaning up fields where there are droppings. I mean, the list, the list gets pretty expensive.
I understand, Chris.
We have to prioritize.
But, you know, most of our fundraising requests come in from PTOs to do extra things. This, to me, is not an extra thing.
I hear what you're saying.
This, to me, is part of their, their education, and that's our obligation, is to provide them with the tools so they can get educated, and that we should be able to find $1,500 in our budget to do it.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, okay, go ahead.
On the sheet music, and I could be barking at the wrong tree, isn't certain things, certain, like if you're going for Star Wars stuff, it's going to be more expensive than something else, and hence, they could probably get things they could play for the money we have.
John Philip Sousa's a little less expensive, Frank.
Yeah, he's not getting to us right.
But they're reaching, they're reaching high.
As opposed to Williams, but...
But this, but this, but the point that you're raising about the, the need for students to have certain materials and the understandable desire to want to support them with the materials, this is a question that we face as a school community. And it's not just with sheet music, it's with sporting equipment, it's with...
Certainly. And every department gets a, gets a budget to buy supplies.
Right.
We also have teachers who routinely dig into their own pockets to go out and buy classroom supplies. So I mean, the reality is, there is a certain amount of this that has been going on forever. And here, the band is looking to address this.
I just, it just finds that our community, that we should be able to provide the tools for our kids to learn. That's our obligation as a community to the, to the children in Shelton. We have the obligation. And I just embarrassed that they have to go out and do fundraisers. I understand extra stuff for, you know, they want to, you know, some of the athletic teams, they want to give everybody jacket, leather jackets, and, or I think one group wants to give kids scholarships. If that's extra, that's fine. But this is like saying, football team, we're only going to give you one football, and you got to practice with one football. I just, it just boggles my mind.
I have a question. Has there not been funds raised through this GoFundMe?
Already?
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 Mr. Bellata is a very creative and passionate teacher. He wants to provide the best for his students. And he, with the best of intentions and in good faith, started a GoFundMe project to raise funds, and some funds have been raised. I have asked him to halt the GoFundMe campaign while this is being deliberated by board members. So that's being held in abeyance at the moment until the Board finally decides which way we're going to go.
No, the Board decide, well, I don't know how it will decide, but if the Board decides, well, no, we're not going to do it this way, what happens to that money?
Yeah, we go back to the, goes back to the.
Do you know how much he's spent so far?
I, I think, I think the, I'm not sure that this is the, I'm not sure that this is the main point, like what would happen to the money? The money will go back.
Well, my feeling is this. Mr. Bellata raised this money with every good intention.
Correct.
I would hate to see this money go back, as long as there is money there. So why can we entertain some kind of an idea to accept this at, to this point, and then go to the Policy Committee for our, to see what we're going to be doing in the future?
Would we be setting a precedent?
Yes, but Faith, there's more than one person that's already gotten the money for GoFundMe on it. Because I went on it, I was the one that brought it up.
Yeah, there's more than one teacher.
If it was just one, perhaps we could, but there's more than one.
I mean, if you go on there, there's teachers everywhere. I've got a friend's daughter upstate who's looking for alternative seating and all kinds of things.
Well, I'm not interested in the other.
Yeah, no, but.
We're talking about. In Mr. Bellata's fundraising event. And if we have a lot of our own teachers that are already on there, then I guess we have to discuss it further.
I think we need to, I think we need to look at it as the whole picture. Personally, I'm of the opinion that we should probably be treating these the way we treat other fundraising proposals for evaluation. But I think that there needs to be some more thoughtful discussion about it and, you know.
Could he hold a car wash? And we could all help out?
We need to have checks and balances.
I mean, you know, no, I'm thinking that, you know, maybe we can do something to help. I mean, if there's not money.
Holding a car wash is still something we have to approve, like we just did for Elizabeth Shelton.
But at least it can be easily get out there and, and do car washes.
Should I amend my motion then, that we will table it?
Somebody who'd like to make a motion to table, that would be an order.
But how critical is it for, he's raised some money, how critical is it to get that sheet music now as opposed to two months from now?
Yeah, I, I think he would like to have it as soon as possible because he can make his plans. You know, I think the idea of recognizing that, one, this was done in good faith, and, two, it's for the good of kids, it has merit. And I think it's a small amount. I think we're talking about, I'm going to, I'm making a guest estimate here, but it's in the neighborhood of $650 or something like that that has been raised. Having them accept it and then us look at other considerations, I don't think that, that is a bad idea. I do, in my opinion, and I'm going to say this, this is not meant to sound dystopian, but the idea of school districts and groups raising money is probably going to be more likely a part of the future that we're going to be living in than not. I, I think the idea of not wanting to encourage individual teachers to, is my professional opinion, not having individual teachers raise money for their own classrooms and perhaps get into a competitive situation with other teachers, I think that's a good idea, not to do that. I think that having programs like the music program, or the robotics program, or other things like that, that's a reasonable way to start. But that would be something that we could consider further at the Policy Committee level and then bring it back to the Board for final deliberation.
So we really need two motions. We need to, well, we're having this discussion. So we need to, we need to accept what he's done and cut it off there, and then refer the entire issue back to the Policy Committee. Is that?
That would be one way to do it.
That could be done as one motion.
Okay.
Okay. And actually, it would be done as an amendment to the current motion. Okay. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I will. I'd like to amend the current motion to state that we will table it, we'll put a hold on the group that already started fundraising, the groups, because I know there's more than one, and put it back to committee for more discussion, and then bring it up at the next board meeting, which will be in October. So we won't have to wait months and months, but we should be able to get an answer.
Okay, but that does not.
But that's two, I know.
That doesn't address.
And accept the money that.
And accept.
Okay.
The money that, that has been collected.
Okay.
Let's start it all over. Let me just ask before we go ahead with that. So we have more than Mr., we have more than Mr. Bellata that has raised some money. So if we approve anything, we have to approve it for all of them.
No, because this is the only motion.
It's on the table.
This is the only one on the table here.
Okay, so.
We're modifying the current motion to state that we are going to put a hold on all current, as Dr. Collette already mentioned, monies. And we are going back to committee to rediscuss and bring it forward at the next board meeting.
Yeah, but you still haven't. You still didn't do the thing about accepting.
So what we want to do is, we want to amend the motion to accept the contribution for the current GoFundMe for the intermediate band program.
Right.
And put a hold on all future GoFundMe programs until the Board has developed a firm policy.
Okay, well, wait a minute. No, because that only addresses the music. What about the other people?
Well, that's what's on here, though. It's only the music that's in here.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't just pick one out, then.
We don't have any other on here.
We don't have anything else on here.
It's only.
I would just, can I just add a point of, Mr. Bellata sent a letter to the Board asking for this to be considered. This is in contrast to others who have not done that. So I mean, I think he is doing everything possible to act in good faith, and sent a letter making this request formally.
And I think my motion does what we want to do.
Right.
Except what's been committed already.
And everything else is on hold.
I understand what you're saying.
So addressing.
Okay, an amendment has proposed to accept, to allow the SIS band to accept the funds that have already been donated through the GoFundMe program, and to put all other GoFundMe proposals on hold until such time as the Board's Policy Committee has been able to formulate a policy, and that policy has been approved by the Board. Okay.
I accept the amendment to my motion.
Okay, but when you say that, that's $660, not the whole $1,500.
I think it's 700, actually.
$649.60.
He just looked.
$649.60.
Okay, somebody backed up.
So I believe I did about $650.
I second.
Okay, okay. So, motion has been. Made the seconded to amend the motion. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Okay, now, the motion has amended.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, it's already been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Sensing none. All in favor?
Can I just ask, so just back to Faith's point, if this is a specific request made by this music teacher for this specific campaign, and none of us on the Board see anything wrong with anything that's being done, and it's only in the best interest of the students, it would then follow that it would be not in the best interest of the students to halt the campaign midway when they're in need of $1,500, not $649.27. So, since there's the one item on the agenda that we're voting on, we're not voting on every crowdfunding event for the, for now and days to come, I don't necessarily see the point of not allowing this.
Because we don't have a policy.
I understand that we don't have a policy, but for this specific.
We haven't finished discussion about this new phenomenon that's taking place.
Sure.
We have to address it. We've got to make sure we have checks and balances.
Parity for everyone.
So help me, help me understand.
We're looking to avoid establishing a precedent. Okay, we're looking to make this an exception and not a precedent.
Right.
Okay, that is the whole point.
That's the point of stopping it where it is.
That's the point that I am trying to get to, right? This is an exception and not the rule. So help me to understand what the downside would be for allowing this fundraiser to continue.
It would be setting the precedent that we let one and not the others, because there are others to continue.
This is a one-off exception because it's something that's already in progress.
But we're stopping with what he has. In other words, that's.
It may pick up again.
We didn't have anything in place for him to operate on so that he could even get to the $650. So we're making that exception right here and now, and we're ending it before it gets to be any.
So our exception that we're making is that we're letting him keep the money people have already donated?
Yes.
Because you can make the argument that he violated Board policy by, by raising monies without coming to the Board first, which is what the policy requires.
Right.
But he has.
But he's not. No, he's not.
It's not his fault we didn't.
Well, he should know the policy.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying, that's how it works.
A good point of information, because there are steps and protocols. So when a teacher wants to do something, they're supposed to approach their administrator. The administrator can't help them, they follow up the ladder. It ends up with Chris. That was not done.
And it is a policy of the Board that all groups looking to fundraise, like he is doing, protocol board.
And give us something in writing.
So because that wasn't done, we're going to say, okay, we're okay for right now, but let's stop and make a policy and move forward from there.
And then he could start it up all over again.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Sensing we're ready to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, terrific. Okay, consideration of the Board to approve the Assistant Superintendent's Contract Extension as discussed.
So move.
Second.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries with one abstention. Okay, consideration of the Board to approve the Superintendent's Contract Extension as discussed.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's see. Comments by the Board Chair. I'll start off with Welcome, Mandy. She's been on the Board for less than a month, and she's dug right in, and she's been showing up to all of the back-to-school nights and so forth, and that's a terrific thing. Sunnyside School, the first day of school, I had the pleasure of going around with our superintendent to visit all of the schools. And I was really happy with what I saw at Sunnyside, including I had a nice conversation with Gary DiFilippo, and it appears that they're working on doing some nice things to make sure that the front of the school really is done properly and it looks nice, which is a terrific thing. I also had an opportunity to see the Sunny Elizabeth Shelton School Library, and it was nice to see that. Has been freshened and updated.
The pit is gone.
Something else that is quite noteworthy is Christine McNamara will be recognized at a dinner on, I believe it is the 12th for being selected as Teacher of the Year. She is a science teacher at Shelton High School. I had the pleasure of being present when she was notified. They called me down to the office. She probably thought she was in trouble or something, because usually when you get called down to the principal's office, it's not a good thing. But she was delighted. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend that dinner because that is in the middle of the time where I reschedule taking my dad back to Naples, Florida for the summer, or for the winter, rather. We had to postpone it because of the hurricane. But it's.
July the 12th?
It's Thursday, the 12th.
Thursday, the 12th.
Yep. And I, I leave on the 8th, and I fly back on the 13th. So.
Friday, the 13th?
It's a quick drive, yeah. So, in any event, but it's a worthwhile event, and if you're able to attend that dinner and visit Brownson, I'm sure the food will be wonderful. And it would be great to show support for Christine, because she certainly has done a lot for us. We're very fortunate that we have so many great teachers in our district.
Absolutely.
And, you know, how they go about picking the winners, I'm not sure, because there's a lot of really worthwhile people out there. Clearwise, reports of Standing Committees, Teaching and Learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Teaching and Learning Committee did not meet this month due to the lack of agenda items, but we are scheduled for, I believe it is October 10th, which is a Tuesday at 4:00.
All right, Finance Committee.
Finance.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. How are you? It's nice to see all of you tonight. The Finance Committee met last week. We reviewed our current operating. Ed gave us a handle on where we stand and also where we finished last year. No votes of any major consequence were taken that I remember. And there was a discussion of both the cafeteria contract and the fact that they were moving forward. The school opened well, with the kids seemed to be enjoying the food that's being presented. Also, there was a discussion about going out to bid for the buses, and that that's something we should be looking at earlier rather than later. And I believe that's the end of the report.
Okay, Policy Committee.
Policy Committee also met on Sept-, well, we did meet on September 12th. And as was already noted tonight, we had an animated discussion on crowdfunding, which will continue next month as a continued board item, agenda item, rather. And we also finally finished our discussion on banners, athletic events. So the Policy Committee is bringing forth to the full Board, consideration of the Board to approve the Booster Club Sponsorship Banner Administrative Regulations to sit for review until the next regular meeting of the Board of Education. And those administrative regs were attached in your packet.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You're there. It was a long discussion of many months. We also will meet on October 10th at 5:00 following Teaching and Learning to continue the crowdfunding discussion.
Okay.
Was there anything else? Was there another agenda?
No.
That, that one was filler, gathered by what we did last week. We had to call it, we had to call that discussion on account of we were going on to an open house. So we could have gone on quite a bit longer.
Right. Okay, Reports of Special Committees, CES. Tom is going to be taking over as our CES rep since we no longer have Arlene.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but just to clarify, I was been the alternate to the CES.
Right.
But being an alternate, I was unable to vote. But I was there in support of Arlene, but also for the Shelton Board of Education. However, just to let you know, this, we had our first meeting for the 2017-2018 school year. Our interim president was the previous vice president, Terry Sheehy, from Stratford. And at this point, the major. And at this point, the major agenda item is the fact that there won't be any election of CES officers until January because a lot of the representatives are up for reelection or non-relection in November. So we could not go through with any election of officers. Other than that, the major item is to state that Dr. Pitcock presented the budget and said that CES is in decent shape. End of my report at this time.
Okay. Kate?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. New business? Election of a secretary. With the resignation of Arlene, she was the secretary of the board, and so we will need to replace her.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to all my colleagues, at this point, I would like to take the opportunity to nominate Kate Koutas to fill in as Secretary of the Board of Education, at least until November elections.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Sensing none, we will close nominations, and I will direct our secretary to cast one unanimous ballot for our secretary. Okay, next item, National Federated High School Sports School Broadcasting Program. Mr. Niski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to present what I believe is an unbelievably exciting opportunity for athletics at Shelton High School. National Federation of High School Sports, which is an overriding governing body for high school sports, has a school broadcast program where they allow students to, in our video production classes, to videotape our events, athletic events, awards assemblies, and then broadcast them through the internet. It's always been a nice program, they've had it for several years, but I never really wanted to get too involved in it because it requires having a student to sign up to be at every game and so on and so forth. It recently came out with some new technology that will allow us to post a camera in the gymnasium and another one in the stadium, and it does not need to be manned by any students. Automatic camera that follows the action of the game, zooms in automatically using unbelievable technology. It's a $15,000 camera. And we will have the opportunity to live broadcast all of our athletic events that are going on in the stadium and any other academic events, our awards ceremonies, our graduation ceremony. And parents from anywhere in the world, friends, relatives, will be able to purchase a subscription, much like a Netflix subscription, to watch any of our athletic events live as they're taking place in the stadium or in the gymnasium. It is an unbelievable opportunity because not only does it get our, showcase our athletes and our teams and our events and things that are happening, but it also is a potential revenue stream for the school district because we will be selling the subscriptions, the Netflix-type subscriptions, through the National Federation, and we'll get a portion of those proceeds depending upon how much we sell them for and percentage of what we get back. Now initially, the cost for each of the cameras is $5,000 per camera, then there's installation, and so I said, wow, that's a great program, but we don't have the money to invest in that and then wait three or four years before we get enough money back, you know, to do that. I happened to come across a benefactor who's very excited about the prospect of donating the money, get this program off and running. Paul and Claudia Paparella, the folks who several years ago donated the money to redo our weight room, have generously volunteered to front the money for this whole program, to donate the money so that we can purchase the cameras, get the program set up, and begin, you know, getting into this brand-new wave of this opportunity. It still allows, the SEF still allows more students to be able to participate in the broadcast as color commentators, do graphics, it's just a great opportunity all around. It's not going to cost the school district any money, and it's potentially going to bring some... I've met with all of the principal people that need to be spoken with, and I would Dan DeVito, the technology end, to make sure that our infrastructure can handle what needs to be done. Part of the money from the donation is going to be to install the internet in the stadium because we currently don't have internet in the stadium. I've talked with Chris, I've talked with Dr. Smith. So at this point, I'm asking the board for permission to accept the donation from the Paparrellas, we're not asking for anything more than being continuing to keep them updated on the successes of Shelton High School athletics. And then allow us to delve into this broadcast program.
Don't they live, like, in Arizona or something?
They live in Arizona, as a matter of fact.
That's great.
Two weeks ago, when we were, Channel 8 was live streaming our game, Mr. Paparella was sitting at home in his living room in Arizona watching the game live. I think we texted him back and forth about how excited he was to watch the game. That's kind of what prompted this whole, this whole thing.
I like the idea, I think it's good, it allows me to see it when I want to. However, I want to know where, who's doing the subscription, is this another job for Ed?
Great question.
How are we going to handle that?
Great question. The National Federation Broadcast Company sells the subscriptions, they handle all the collection of all the funds, they send us a check quarter.
And then the check...
Ed, you will be checking that, right?
The check would go into the...
We would have to determine where that money was going.
Okay.
Question, what, what are they donating? How much are they donating?
$12,000.
Okay, and that's an initial investment, and so what does that mean in subsequent years?
There's no additional cost, future, future years. We just need to agree to maintain a subscription program for three years.
Does that cost, does that cost nothing?
No additional cost to us. They, the National Federation of High School Sports, sets up a webpage for us, which has our entire schedule of all our games. We don't have to, we just send in the schedules, they set, they schedule all of the turning on of the camera, the turn off the camera, we can override that if there's something that we need to turn off.
So that's, that should be total investment rather than initial?
Total investment.
Chan, and who would maintain this equipment, like, if it breaks down or what?
There's, the beauty of it is there's no maintenance required at all. The only maintenance is software updates, which are included in, as long as you're a member of the program, you're participating in the program, the software updates are free. Camera itself, it's about this big, it's actually built with four individual cameras that do not move. There's motors, they're just, there's an algorithm, a computer algorithm that, much like our security system at Shelton High School, anticipates where the action is going to be, and will switch from one camera to the next seamlessly. You can't even tell, it looks like the camera's moving across the field. It will slow down, it will zoom in on the basketball game, and then take a follow shot, zoom back out. There's a little dongle that we connect wirelessly that goes to our scoreboard that puts the live score up on the corner of the screen. And that would be for all of our home games. As more schools begin to join in the program, many of our away games would also be eligible. All of the games are free for anybody to watch with an internet connection 72 hours after the event is over. So you don't, the only pig, you want to watch the games live. And we own the content, it's our content, it's our stuff to do with what we want as far as, you know, where it goes when you come over.
John, if I could ask a question, I went on their website and looked at a couple of things. One of the things that they talked about was building this through the students who are wanting to get into the broadcasting field and into television and technology like that. So is this mounted camera going to prohibit us from having students do this? The second part of my question is, it says that we get 50% of the $9.95 a month charge. Is that after a certain number is hit?
Those are good questions. One is, it will not prohibit us from using handheld cameras and plugging into the system as if we didn't have the pixel lock camera mounted. So if we wanted to livestream an event that was not in the gymnasium or in the field, if it was something in the auditorium, we could do that with our kids with their camera to just plug into our account because we would have an account. And the subscription money that we get is if people purchase a one-month pass, it's $9.95 for a one-month pass, we get 10% of that, which would be $1. If they wanted to purchase a four-month or a season pass, we, they charge us a certain amount of money, and we can charge whatever we, whatever we want for that amount of money, and we keep the extra. So if they charge us $25 for the season, we charge, we sell it for $35, we get to keep the $10, is our problem. Then there's also a year pass, that they charge us $50, and we can sell it for $75 or $100.
So this has to go to policy, this, this, this component has to go to policy to determine how much we're going to charge for those extra pieces?
That's correct.
Right.
We would have to figure out what, what do we want to, you know, what do we want to do with that money? How much do we want to charge? Daniel Hand High School, for example, is just getting into this program, they're charging $200 for the year-long pass. It also includes a physical pass so people can come to the games or watch them at home. So there, there are a lot of options out there.
My last question is, would we have a Title IX issue since football is going to be pretty much the only thing you're going to see at the stadium involving students other than graduation?
That's a great question. In our stadium currently, we have boys, we have football, boys soccer, girls soccer, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse. In the gymnasium, we have girls volleyball, boys volleyball, girls basketball, boys basketball.
So it would be clubs?
There wouldn't be any Title IX...
We have the band, too, which would be nice.
We could show the band show, could be broadcast live through the internet, anybody could purchase that, that one-time, one-month pass. See a band show. Any of the educational stuff, graduation, the award ceremony, no charge. You can just sign up to get them for free.
What's the time to get this started?
Sorry?
If the board were to give the okay tonight, what is the timeframe before the system would come online? And what I'm looking at is, we need to address the cost issue and policy for what we're going to charge.
That was a good question. Mrs. Paparella said, who do I write the check to? Who's ready to write that check tomorrow? The National Federation people are like, here's the contract, if you want to sign it, we'll get, we'll send you the stuff tomorrow. So I talked with, the biggest stumbling block at this point right now is getting the internet out of the stadium. Mr. DeVito's working with different companies to get us a very specific quote on exactly how much that's going to cost and what that's going to take to...
So there is some cost in addition to the donated money?
That's correct.
So there's going to be some installation costs that we're going to have to come up with?
No.
The donation will include that.
I built those installation costs and all the buffer into the donation from Mr. Paparella. I wanted to make sure that I included everything. So it's only costing us $9,000 from the National Federation, he's donating 12. So there's enough for us to put these in.
For Dan Better, getting some prices is less than three.
Oh, he will.
Well, I, the initial, the initial quote that I got was 500, so I built in a $3,000 buffer there, making sure that if I wanted to buy extra microphones for our kids in the video class, that we could, we could do all of that, so I tried to make sure.
John, one, one thing, though, if you're going to run internet cable now up through there, and there's discussion going on with the superintendent and the mayor to renovate the stadium, how do we make sure we're not going to just put it in and then dig it up?
That's an excellent question. Running cable from the school to the stadium to the press box is much too expensive. They're going to use what's called a point-to-point microwave system, which is a, the same way that they get internet from building to building in New York City. They put a dish on one side, a dish on the other, and it's just a direct dedicated line for that one piece. Which is much less expensive than running fiber cable.
Okay, two questions. Number one, I would assume that every, every child that would be videotaped will have a disclaimer or something, correct?
Another excellent question. All of our students in the school district have a, our policy is that they can be videotaped, they can be photographed, unless they say no. Currently, we only have one student, I believe, at the high school who has said that they don't want to be videotaped, and that student is not sympathetic, but that's something that we would have to kind of look at, just to make sure.
And is there a minimum amount of subscriptions required, or no?
No minimum at all.
So it could be 10, or it could be 100?
Ms. Keller, who is it?
Ms. Keller.
The problem with the band, Ed, that's, I applaud your effort, sorry, it was excellent. Because we parents cannot even videotape their games now because of the infringement on the copyright laws of the composers of the music.
Of the music, yes.
The band goes on on a Saturday night, they get stated right there, right there, can't have videotaped. Someone would want to put the stadium in, and you obviously, you're in the head of the stadium. In, in, you know, legal situation.
We would turn it off, we, we just wouldn't put that on the schedule of the...
Well, no, what do you do if they're, what do you do if they're playing at the game?
They'll, they'll shut the camera.
That's free, that's open source, that's, anybody can...
Because they were playing on TV for Channel 8, so...
Yeah, so what happens?
Okay.
Right, they don't do it in the halftime.
So if they, if they do a halftime, then you just shut them off quick?
Oh, that's a shame.
No Star Wars, but John Philip Sousa's okay.
That's right. Well, that's very exciting, John.
It's very exciting, and, you know, the superintendent asks us to think outside the box and come up with, you know, innovative solutions, and this is, I think, is a whole run for everybody.
What I like is that I can watch a football game and I don't have to sit outside in the cold.
It is going to get cold, it's on.
Yeah, I don't know.
So if we make a motion to approve this, this procedure now, you can go ahead, even though we still got work to do in policy?
You mean, so we accept the donation?
But that policy's going to have to hurry up.
Yeah, well, to the left.
Could we, can we make a motion to accept the donation?
I think we can accept the motion to make the donation, we just have to make sure policy has something worked out as far as...
It's going to be the 10th.
It's going to be the 10th, it's not that...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, that's it.
We don't even have the bids yet to put in the internet system.
We've got, there's enough time.
Things will, things will happen.
But we can accept them, we can accept, do, accept their donation today.
Is that what you're looking for, is accept the donation?
So I make a motion that we accept the donation from the Paparella, Mr. and Mrs. Paparella for the purchase, the investment into the NFHS Video Streaming Project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Point of information?
Yes.
Will we need to have the contract reviewed by legal counsel before we sign anything?
Definitely.
Yes.
I would send that, I'll send that over for a few more.
Alrighty, any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And also, just if I can, I just want to thank the members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, Chair, that attended the Hall of Fame Dinner. We yourself go at Shelton High School.
A good time was had by all.
It was.
Great time.
It was still my thunder.
And you are an expert in C.
Well, that happened the second time, it was just, it was such an amazing night. Being able to sit there in the gymnasium and listen to three hours worth of speeches.
On wonderful chairs, might I add.
But everyone in the room was hanging on every word. It was really, it was really special. Thank you for your support.
And compliments to you for all the interviewing you did, the various...
It was the whole committee.
But no, you went out to DMC and interviewed Friends Up, and the comments you included, that was cool.
It was a long time, it was...
It was a long...
Mark, could I ask something about, for new business? Could at some point, we have just a little update about the School of Innovation? I just wondered how it's got picked off and started?
Actually, I'm working on arranging for us to have board members to be able to go on a tour after they're up and running a bit.
Right, but I just wanted to know maybe how it started at the beginning of the school year, you know?
Chan, are you going to address that tomorrow in your...
In your back to school?
No, it's not, it's for the entire school.
Okay. Do you think that...
The School of Innovation teachers will address it.
Right. Oh, okay. I assume it kicked off well.
Safe assumption.
Okay. Or we would have heard about it.
Okay. For your information, we have the vacancy report attached and the staff and stipend actions and the enrollment report. And upcoming back-to-school nights, we have SIS tomorrow, and that is at, I believe, 7:00. o'clock. And then on October third, we have Shelton High, and I believe that one is at six.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay. For the opening enrollment report, just, there needs to be an adjustment to the Sunnyside School, third grade Lucas, Michelle Lucas's class, because it has no, no numbers in it, but I figured out that the enrollment from the other sheet is 221, so I'm assuming that she has 20 kids in her class.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Alrighty, highlights.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And just to follow up with what Mr. Niski started, I did attend the Hall of Fame Dinner, and it was excellent, it was well-run, we had a wonderful MC, and of course, we had, you know, really exemplary honorees as well. So, I, I just want to send a shout-out to Karen Devamchek, she was chairman of the committee this year, and she did an outstanding job of organizing and making sure everybody did what it was supposed to, and then, of course, all the rest of the committee members did a wonderful job.
Including you.
Yeah, I was, I was going to just bring that up, Mr. Superintendent.
And anyway, it was, it was an honor to be there and it was an honor to be on that committee.
Okay. Anybody else under highlights?
I was just going to piggyback on Hall of Fame, what a nice event it was, and we, whoever put our table in front of the fan gets kudos.
It was her.
No, the name tag was on it.
That's true. Thank you, Mr. Niski.
Yes. Obviously, multiple open houses, our teachers.
Excellent.
Yeah. Nice presentations by the principals, and I was at the first home game, football home game, and the band did, did their first performance of the year, and they were singing some, playing some interesting pieces like taps when the other team wasn't doing, so, so it was quite interesting. That was, I was going to pick out.
Anybody else under highlights?
I just echo Kate's sentiments on the open house, back-to-school nights, I think they've all been very, very good, some, some more unique than others, but definitely, they did a very nice presentation.
The best was the air-conditioned one last night.
Anyone else? Okay, Chris?
I, I have a highlight I'd like to add. The rededication of the old Lafayette School as the Richard Belden Community Center, I thought was a wonderful event, and I was very proud of our students who were part of videotaping the event for the city. And, you know, their teacher came in on a Sunday to make sure that they were all set and had everything they needed, and then the kids stayed, and, and they really felt like they were 60 Minutes reporters, you know, on the job, which is exactly what we want. They were very talented and passionate about it, so I was proud to see it, and I understand, although I've never met Mr. Belden, I understand that he was a great contributor to the community.
He was a good friend of my father's, and I'm very sad I forgot that was happening.
But Kate, it was very, very hot, even the superintendent took his jacket off, and I didn't have my fan.
I discovered I missed it when his cousin or niece or something posted on Facebook, but I saw it from the beach, so I couldn't quite get it.
Alright, I have a couple of things. One, I'll echo the sentiments about both the Hall of Fame Dinner and the open houses. An interesting thing, a couple of weeks ago, our band was featured on WTNH at the six o'clock in the morning hour, which is before coffee, and also at five o'clock and six o'clock, and I did show up for those things, and it was terrific to see the kids. They had a heck of a weekend because that was also, they had the football game that night, and then they had the Hall of Fame Dinner.
Yep.
And the kids were just terrific, and at the game last week, very energetic show, and I feel real good about the direction that they're going. We're going to have a huge presence at Shelton Day this year, we're going to have more school groups than we've had in the past. I believe we're going to be in the general vicinity of Amici's or Webster Bank, I think, which is further up from past years, and that'll be something to check out if you're at Shelton Day. You know, it's a good thing for us to have our students out in the community and showing the public just what wonderful things are happening in our schools. With that, I think I've said enough, and thank you all for a very productive meeting, and I'll see you tomorrow night. We are adjourned.
Take care, folks.